The Bay Area in general and Oakland in specific has hundreds of nonprofits. And if you include the churches, what are we doing?
What are we doing?
Please restate your point before we started recording, because it's a very good one.
Well, I'm just wondering why with all the programs and all the funding going into Oakland, why every child in Oakland is not in college or is not in a private school or is not in a uh school that is catered to their needs and skill set. Wh- where's the money going? Because I have seen teachers do more with less. So I'm wondering what's the problem? Because having been a public school teacher, I can teach any group of kids anywhere at any time. If I have three things, parent support, a a room with some chairs in it and some paper and pencils. That's all you need. And a teacher who gets the kids. So I don't understand with all the money that's flooded into Oakland to support children in schools. I I'm not sure why three quarters of Oakland isn't in college and able to afford to get jobs that they are not getting priced out of Oakland with. I'm just curious. But I have so many different theories. First of all, I think there is a commitment to ensure that children are not successful in public schools. The attack on public schools is appalling in the first place. There are smart kids in those schools. There are good teachers in those schools. And I don't understand why teachers became the boogeyman for everything that has gone wrong in society. How about the churches to your point, right? People keep claiming to be going. What are you learning when you get there? Are you not learning to be kind to one another, to support one another? Do unto others as you want to be treated? And then we walk outside, we act like savages and they were mystified. What's wrong with the kids? What do I always say is wrong with the kids? Us. Maybe if we acted more dignified, maybe if we actually took resources and used it on the children. I mean, with all the money that churches have, why are there any children hungry? Why are there any kids in orphanages? Why are there any kids in foster care? If all the pro lifers are really so pro life, how come there's not a line around the buildings to to uh adopt these kids? And fund these programs? How come everything that's child related isn't automatically funded? How come there's not a slush fund that just goes to children? We have money that just goes to war.
Yeah.
No one ever says, oh, I don't know if there's enough money in the bank account to cover this war. Hmm. But let's cut the waffle program for the children i- i- in poor areas. And I mean, poor areas like Appalachia, the mountains of Kentucky. It's not just inner city. It's not just a little black kid with the flies flying around their head. Okay, like there's poor people of all races. There just seems to be a commitment to make sure some are more successful than others. And that and that's layered in and of itself. But speaking of Oakland, I know that there's enough resources in Oakland to save a small country in Africa. So I don't understand why we can't send all the kids in Oakland to college. Why is it this hard? It's not this hard. Kids are not this hard to teach.
Pulling in donations, all these churches pulling in, you know, you add up all the churches that are pulling in donations every every week. They pull in millions.
Every week they're pulling in money, tides, donations, all kinds of things. And you're telling me what God's good at everything other than balancing the checking account? Give me a break. Welcome to raw food.
Welcome to raw food. Yeah, what what are we getting with all of this money? You you would think, yeah, I mean, the I've been.
I'm not feeling my bang for my buck.
All all kinds of fundraisers. I I'm constantly getting hit up for donations. I donate when and where I can. I'm I I'm asked to go to like, you know, fundraising dinners here and there. You know, sometimes it's like related to something Stiles Hall or like something someone else is doing. But yes, to your point, like sometimes it feels like the money is just to pay for the fancy dinner event with like the with the influential person that you came, that you brought in for the to be the guest of honor. And where's where's the rest of the money going?
Between the Salvation Army, the Red Cross, the Catholic Church, the uh donation centers, the bake sales, the fundraisers, the grants, the federal funding. You're telling me with all of those resources, we cannot do something as basic as ensure that kids get through from K through twelve and can come out and read and write and do basic math and have basic manners? We can't, we can't guarantee that with the money we have. Really? And yeah, it's easy to make the teachers the boogeyman. But my question is, where are the parents? Now, as you know, there was a whole big controversy in San Francisco, your neck of the woods, over uh comments that was made by one of the Asian members of the school board. And everybody's outraged, everybody's upset because she said, as an Asian person, she said, she did not think that black and brown families were as supportive of education as other groups. And people were outraged and said that it was racist. Now, having been a school teacher, this is what I will say. I am disappointed to see parents show up to Halloween, but not to parent teachers night. I am disappointed when I only see parents at football games, but not at school board meetings. Where's the lie? Parent teachers night is twice a year. I don't care if you work eighteen hours a day. You're telling me twice a year, s- one person from the child's family cannot come down and speak to the teacher? I'm sorry, I I do not believe that it's that hard, that I don't know. I'll take that back. I'm not saying it's it's hard. I'll say it's not impossible to do, especially if you get the school year calendar months in advance and you know the date's coming. You get a ballpark of dates. Right? If you can plan a vacation, you can plan to get to the nail salon. You can you can plan to get to this, that and the other. You can plan to get to your boyfriend's house, your girlfriend's house. Why don't we plan in advance to get to parent teachers night? Why don't we pool parents together? There's a way to do this. It can't just be, oh, all the teachers are garbage and they're teaching Marxism. I mean, because this is just not accurate. I mean, have people been in a school lately? Because they're talking out of their ass. I mean, I I don't even know how teachers are supposed to teach about Martin Luther King at this point. I mean, what are they supposed to tell the kids he marched for? Since you can't talk about anything. How are you supposed to learn anything? Well, wh- who's Martin Luther King? Well, he was this African American guy who fought for rights. Who's rights? We can't talk about it. What?
But he died and he has a holiday named after him, so he was kind of important.
Right, that a a group of people in this country who were uh congresspeople voted against, by the way, John McCain being one of them.
Okay, thank you.
So again, before we start blowing people, the Liz Cheney's of the world who are having their grand old moment in the sun, look at the track record. What do I always say? Pattern of behavior. It's not any one thing. I- i- if you say the word nigger, that doesn't make you more of a card carrying klamsman any more or less than somebody else, unless I see a pattern of behavior that is aligned with that language. Everybody has said the N word, get over it. If you're looking for the once human out there who has never said it, you're kidding yourselves. Everybody has said it. I'm looking for a pattern of behavior.
If you include with an A or a hard R, yes.
Everybody has said it.
Well, my thing is, the only people who say it with a hard R are people that are so comfortable saying it that like.
No, I disagree with you.
Well, by the time they get to the get to the point where they're caught saying it with a hard R, you've been saying this, you just got caught, you're comfortable using this language.
Everybody has used the N word. Black people have used the N word. Ugh, they go for niggas. You know what that means when we say it. There's niggas, there's homies, there's brothers, and then there's ugh, niggas. You you know the distinction. It ain't colored folk. You know what you're talking about when you say, ugh, look at those niggas over there. Bombs.
Is it any different if you say, look at those bum ass niggas over there?
Yeah. Everybody has said it and they have said it within their own race as well. You you don't think there's somebody in Thailand right now calling one of their Asian kinfolk driving fucked up on the on the highway? A nigga in their language?
I really want to know what, I want to know how to say nigga in every language.
Right. So if we're out there looking for the the holy man who's never said it, good luck.
This is a good point.
Whether you've said it internally, quietly, in prayer, in in the car, where wherever you've said it. Everybody has said it. I mean. Come on, man.
I mean, sometimes I'd be like, Lord, deliver us from these niggas because people be wilding out. I just saw some lady, some some woman in 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 my neck of the woods where I grew up in Dallas, like lit her boyfriend on fire at the gas station.
We're doing too much.
She took waiting to excel to the next level. She literally threw gas, she went and got fifty cents of gas, doused him in it while he was sitting in the car and lit that nigga on fire.
She was waiting to go scorched earth.
Drove away, like they tried to stop her. She shoved some chick to the ground, drove away. And then the nigga died like days later, so now she's in jail for murder. Like, she's awaiting trial.
Sweetie, it's not that serious. He has one penis, right? It's not like he's got like six. Like i- i- he's one human. It's it's one guy on one weird planet. It's not that serious to go to jail. So now he's a burn victim and you're about to do life. Congratulate.
Dead.
Oh, did he die completely? Okay, so now he's dead. All right, I guess your mission was accomplished there, but is was it worth doing life? I mean, I don't know. There's two things I don't want to go to prison for for a dude. Another woman and money.
Yeah.
I never want to be so mad at you, I burn me.
Yeah, and in your life over this shit.
Right. Now I gotta do life because you're an asshole? No, thank you.
Yeah, let me.
No, thank you. I'm cool. I mean, I'm mad, but like I'm not, I want to go do twenty five to life in prison because I'm so mad, like, okay.
We've got to find a better way of being petty.
We've got to find a better way of being petty that doesn't result in you going to prison.
Right, if I want to get a lick back, okay, like you you have some righteous indignation. You might even really deserve some kind of justification.
You may deserve it.
With with writing an angry email to their boss, like get trying to get them fired, cancel culture, get some culture, try to get them fired, or sue somebody.
Yeah, I get it. I get the anger, I get the rage and I get the wanting of the revenge. I'm not saying the desire for it isn't there or important or necessary. I'm just saying there's very, very few reasons I want to do life in prison for. And one of them ain't gonna be a dude.
Yeah.
I do life in prison, it's because I stole like fifty million from a bank account and I still know where it's stashed and I'm going to be able to get out in time to use it. All right, then maybe I'll do five years.
Yeah, or at least my homies and family know where it's at and like.
Like the homies know where it's at, you know, break me off a piece, pay for my attorney, get me out and set me up. Okay, I'll I'll take a lick. But like over some like, I'm so mad at this dude shit, like no, bro, there's no dick in the world worth me doing twenty five to life. You've got me. Man, I'm the wrong girl. Not me. Respect my credit score. Sorry, I keep that shit cool, so I'm not in a situation where I'm burnt out on some dude. Will I be upset, mad, devastated? Sure. Doing life? Nah, nah.
Ain't doing life over your ass. That's. Can we just.
Dick in the world worth that?
Because you got to do like like Lil Boosie just came out and said such shit. He's like, yo, if you kill another nigga over over pussy, you know, over a woman, you're a pussy ass nigga. I was like, finally Lil Boosie says some shit that I agree with because like back in the day, it used to be the case that like people, the common refrain was, I don't fight over females. Like, I'm not going to get in a fight with you over over this chick, especially this is, I'm speaking back when I was in high school in Dallas, right?
Yeah.
But now the that's what these kids are fighting over and they can't just fight, it's gotta be.
Yeah, like it's not your wife, you know what I mean? Like, I understand even getting into a fight over like someone who's your wife and it's your homie, like that's a different, but like just like some boyfriend girlfriend nonsense, like dude. Out of here.
Yeah.
No, I'm not the one for that foolishness.
And niggas can't just fight one on one, it's gotta be jumping and then it's gotta be.
Yeah, jumping, shooting, well, because nobody wants to get beaten up and ends up on World Star. See, back in the day, you could just take a beating and that was the end of it. And then everybody went home and, you know, a few days later, you played baseball together or something and you were cool. But it's not like that anymore because we don't really have communities that know each other like that. The parents don't know each other, like I mean, we all got into fights when we were little kids, but nine out of ten times we got into fights with other kids that our families knew. So at the end of the day, the parents talk, they slap us both and we're all grounded and that was the end of it. But now, you know, parents don't know each other, not working as communities as much as we used to. So now it's like beef between people instead of like a stupid issue between a couple of knuckleheads of families who know each other from the neighborhood. I mean, our families weren't fighting each other, they slapped the shit out of us for acting like idiots. And then we both were crying and we're both grounded, both sides. No parent was like, my kid, your kid, it wasn't like that. They were like, these two idiots got into a fight at school today. You're both grounded. That was the end of it.
Very true. I I just don't see parents acting like that these days because, you know, it's the hel- helicopter parenting type shit where.
I want to be your friend, I want to kick it with you.
Yeah, my kids can do no wrong. And so I'm not going to discipline my kid and if they got into a fight, either they started the fight, I'm gonna try to make it somebody else's fault.
Right, it's ridiculous at this point, you know, uh, discipline doesn't mean you don't love the child. It means you're teaching the child the difference between standing wrong and and when to have fear so that they learn fear from you in a healthy way and they learn love from you in a healthy way instead of going out into the world and learning it out there. Because you're gonna learn it. It's just a matter of when and how. The world is a tough place. I'm not saying you should be so tough on your child because the world is so cruel, I'm gonna teach you cruelty. Like, no, the home should be the safest place for the child, right? You come here for peace. But I'm gonna set you up to prepare yourself for what's out there. Because not everything out there is gravy and not everything out there is going to be good for you. And if you don't learn fear from me, you will learn it from a police officer who puts his foot in your ass. Right? You could learn it in prison or you could learn it here grounded. It's up to you. But either way, you're gonna learn fear. Or you're gonna get popped in the mouth because you're mouthing off because you've never been taught parameters. So one day you're gonna come across somebody who's gonna knock your teeth out of your head because they don't want to tolerate it. You're gonna learn it. How do you want to learn this lesson? Because you're gonna learn it.
Speaking of lessons people need to learn, uh, I've noticed a trend going on with hip hop concerts specifically where fans are rushing the stage and getting on stage. And instead of getting kicked off, one rapper, Lil Dirk, um, was it Lil Dirk? No, Playboy Carti, the fan got on the stage and he like embraced the fan, um, let the fan sing the song with him, encouraged the fan to go crowd surfing and shit like that, right?
So then it was set up, they allowed that fan to go on the stage.
They made it seem like the security was really trying to stop the guy and then Playboy Carti was like, no. And now it seems like, you know, because he did it and went viral for it, all these other rappers have to do it. And so most recently, Lil Lil Uzi Vert was at Outside Winds, which is, you know, San Francisco's festival. And the same thing happened. And my thing is like, someone needs to tell these people no, because eventually these, you're you're gonna have a bunch of.
Somebody's gonna take it too far.
Yeah, and thank you for pointing that out. Maybe some of this shit was set up.
I always think it's set up. What did I tell you about the Will Smith thing, right? Set up, did you see the clip I sent you from that comic?
I saw the clip you sent.
Did you see it? It is almost verbatim.
I still think it was real.
You still think it was not staged, even though it's verbatim of a script from a movie you saw with your eyes?
Yes.
Okay.
I think there, I think there are certain things that are stranger than victim, uh, the stranger than fiction.
So even though you admit, you concede that I sent you a link to a movie clip that has the same situation played out in the movie as what you witnessed with your eyeballs in the Will Smith, Chris Rock situation? You still think the Chris Rock, Will Smith situation was not staged?
Yes, I I was the first one telling people it was staged because I was like, yo, there's a whole art and science to making a slap look real. And I was, and you know, you you slap the side of your leg with your opposite hand that you're doing the slapping with to give it that sound and shit. And the fact that the camera was directly behind Will Smith, where you wouldn't be able to tell if they were doing a fake slap or not, right? But when you see the other angles, when you see the reaction, you see his left hand is not, you know, uh, out there. Plus like, what the fuck does Will Smith stand to gain from slapping this nigga? Um, sometimes art imitates life, sometimes life imitates art.
But the art came first.
I know, so sometimes life is imitating art.
Okay.
I do, I I do give you credit for for pointing out that that is a strange coincidence.
So it is a very strange coincidence to you that the same exact situation you saw played out in front of your eyeballs by Will Smith and Chris Rock is what you witnessed from the movie clip I sent you that was from three decades ago.
Wouldn't be the first time. How many times has The Simpsons like predicted some shit?
And they were right.
Yeah, years in advance. Donald Trump being president, shit, they they, there was even some shit about how like The Simpsons had some nine eleven references beforehand.
They did.
Like.
Yes, they did and they and and it was correct.
Yeah, like like obvi- like very like hmm.
But you think in this case, it is not.
I think he did slap this fucking guy.
Even though the Chris Rock's ticket sales have catapulted, even though the publicity on this.
Unless Will Smith's getting a piece of 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 that that ticket sales action.
Well, I mean.
If he's a producer, you know.
Aren't gonna go see his next movie? You think people aren't like, of course it has, it has built, it has given them more marketing than you could have paid for.
He had movies canceled.
For now.
Okay.
He'll get it back, he's not canceled. He just had films canceled.
Yes, and there, yes, yes, there is a distinction. He is not being canceled. He had some movies get canceled. And I do know some of them do that because those movies weren't even going to come out until next year anyway. They were in production.
A- all I'm saying is there's a distinction and that distinction seems to be based on something that was scripted three decades ago. Just saying, almost verbatim.
Word.
So you think that Will Smith coincidentally, word for word, had a beef with Chris Rock on a stage based on getting clowned? And it was just a coincidence that the same words came out of their mouths? Based on a movie script from three decades ago that you saw with your eyeballs?
Might have been a fucking really surreal moment or some shit. Oh, no, moving on, moving on. Let's go back to the San Francisco uh Board of Supervisors because now you've had, they have super, I guess supervisor meetings now that the public can go to.
Yeah, the the school board meetings with the supervisors.
Yeah, so some folks in the black community are demanding that this woman step down and they're saying that violence, eh, this is gonna show up in the streets, basically essentially threatening violence.
Okay, but here's what we're not considering. She was appointed to the position by a black woman. She was not elected to the position, she was appointed to the position because she filled one of the school board positions due to the recall of the three people who were taken out of those positions originally. So three people were recalled from the board and I believe it was London Breed who appointed this Asian woman to the board as one of the replacements for the recall. Interestingly, there was more of a push to do the recall than there is to get this woman out.
Because there was a pattern of behavior with the recall. We had that that conversation about the recall.
My understanding of that recall, that it was primarily based on the fact that the three people who were taken out of the position wanted to do a school audit as well as rename schools that were named after racist people. And on the heels of COVID, many people from the community thought prioritizing renaming the schools was not the right decision. That was sort of like the icing on the cake.
Yes.
Rather than opening.
We're not named after racist people. That's it, we don't name schools after racist people in San Francisco. These schools were named after Abraham Lincoln and shit like that. They wanted to.
People are arguing that Lincoln was a racist.
I get it, but like that really renamed, can we, there's so many more things that need to be done than getting rid.
And I think that's to your point, that's what the community was saying, that like we're gonna, the money and resources and time we're gonna take in renaming schools, why don't we take that and first of all, get them reopened because they were closed because of COVID and all the resources and and so I think that was a big part of the argument resulting in one of many other issues um, of these three school board members being recalled. And then one of them positions is replaced by this Asian woman, I believe her name is Anne Tu. And she basically says that she doesn't think education is as much of a priority to black and brown communities as they are to other communities. And she was called a racist for those comments.
Uh, I mean, tho- those are, that's her opinion. This is probably the first like political appointment she's ever had. She didn't, she's, I mean, she was dumb to say it if she didn't think there was gonna be blowback from it. You know, you probably should have just kept your mouth shut um, and just did the work. Because that's what she was put put in here to do, is to do the work rather than doing a doing a bunch of grandstanding, which is what the previous people were doing, which is why the parents wanted to get rid of them. She gets in and she shoots her mouth off, which she should have just did the work. So mistake on her part? Do I think she needs to lose her job for it? No, not yet. Again, back to pattern of behavior and she.
Pattern of behavior.
And as you said, to an extent.
I don't know, does she have a pattern of behavior being racist or did she say something racist or? And if, is it racist if it's true?
If it's true, it's not racist, but people don't want to, don't want to admit it.
And therein lies the debate.
Yeah.
Do black and brown communities care as much about education as other communities do? And I don't mean anecdotally. Yes, I'll, we're gonna find thousands of black families, Latino families, Asian families, um, Ukrainian families, immigrant families that appreciate education.
Absolutely.
Anecdotically, we'll find one in any bunch. As a whole culturally, do cultures value education the same? What do you think, Jay?
I think they do, but it, I think it's a more of a socioeconomic thing. I think if you're, if you're very, very, very poor and and also if you're very poor and you had kids before you were ready, you know what I mean? If you're one of these people who had a kid when they were twenty years old and you've got, you know, now you've got three, you know, three, four kids by three or four different guys, you're thinking, you're in survival mode, you're not necessarily valuing education as much as say someone else who went and got a degree, you know, saw the benefits of education in their in their own career and they have a and they have a career rather than working at McDonald's with with their three baby daddies and shit, right? So you've seen education prove to be valuable in your life. And so, yes, you will value education with your kids, whereas those other folks, if they're in a different type of situation where they did not see the value of education because they didn't go get any further education beyond high school, I can see where they're coming from. And also they can value education, but then also, you know, to the experiences that you've had, still show up and just argue with the teacher all the time and just yell at them and all, you know what I mean?
Right.
You've had instances where parents argue with you because you failed their kid when their kid didn't do a single homework assignment the entire school year. And the parent, if they valued education, instead of showing up to argue with you at the end of the year when their kid gets an F, if they valued education, they would have made sure their kid was getting their fucking homework done.
Right, like I'm always distressed and unnerved by conversations with parents who are like, I didn't know my kid didn't do homework for a month. For a month? I mean, we, there's a homework sheet that you're supposed to be signing every day. The kid writes down the homework assignment. I mean, you you've heard of school, right? Like, I mean, it even if, even if you are not a student yourself, you've heard of kids having homework. At no point did you scratch your head and say, hey, I never see this kid come home from school and open up his school books and sit down and like do work. And I think it's important for kids to have homework. I think it's important for them to understand that the learning continues outside of the classroom, not just in the classroom. The learning is supposed to continue at home, it should be part of your conversations, it should be part of like your daily living, like what you're doing. So being a child of immigrant parents, education was something that was very important to them, was more important than me going to the prom or me going out or shopping or, you know, instead of me getting all new school clothes, they would get hand me downs from other people and save their money for me to be able to travel or have the books that I need for school or or whatever it was. Like, we just made different decisions. I never had Jordans, I never had the name brand clothes, but I never had any, but I was also never missing anything I needed for school. Hmm, you know, I wasn't a kid that showed up to school and didn't have pencils, but I've got on eighty dollar sneakers and an iPhone. And there has to be conversations around these things so that we can fix it.
Can we talk about that? Can't get your kid a calculator, can't get your kid the the shit that they need for school, can't afford to send them to a to a science camp or something like that during the summer.
Right, they all have a phone.
Five different pairs of two hundred dollar sneakers.
Right, and they're in fourth, fifth grade.
Gucci, just so you can post pictures of your of you and your kid in your matching outfits.
I mean, I'm just saying.
Rapist designer, getting getting Ds and Cs.
I'm just saying there are decisions that can be made that can help circumvent some of the bullshit that we can't circumvent. And a part of that is learning at home. So when I went to school and both my parents worked, it's not like I had a stay at home mom, both of my parents worked full time. My dad worked six days a week, he was a truck driver. I got the work at school and my parents expected me to come home and then learn the material that I got from school. They had no expectations of the teacher reading with me one on one. They had no expectations of the teacher sending home the homework. They had no expectations of the teacher doing anything other than teaching me. Here is what you need to learn this week, X, Y and Z. My parents expected me to take that information home now and do my homework and practice it with them as a family. So yes, I'm supposed to learn how to read letters A through J. I now come home and concentrate on making flashcards, practicing my letters A through J. I don't sit and do nothing until I go back to school the next day. Instead of the kid having the iPad at dinner, make some flashcards. Or let the kid use the phone for the flashcards, right? Like, eh, but I mean, it doesn't have to be cartoons and bullshit and TikTok all day.
Yeah.
There's a way, there's a public library. Every public library has computers.
Mm hmm.
Right, if we can get our nails done, we can, we can get the kid to the library.
Half the time, the library is like right next to the to the school. You know, the schools have to do after school programs, so like, yeah, not saying they don't value education. They all want their kids to go to college or some shit, but like it, there's different levels to this shit.
Yeah, of the investment it takes, I think is practiced differently culturally.
I think it really comes down to to the to the socioeconomic of it. I think it really comes down to, to, to the socioeconomic of it. I think if you're, if you're a part of a upper middle class black family, your parents are gonna be on your ass about education. Whereas if, if you're part of a, a working class black family, your parents might be on your ass about education, but they also might not. And that split comes down to, did your mom have you? With, you know, four or five other kids, with four or five other niggas when your mom was between the ages of eighteen and twenty five? Or did your mom have you with one person and whether or not y'all are, doesn't even matter if y'all are married, if, if they're married or not. Just, you know, does your mom have a whole bunch of other baby daddies and shit?
I mean, or and vice versa. Let's not just put it on the moms. Where are the, where are these guys who are laying all this pipe and having these kids and not showing up? It's not just on the moms.
Oh, of course. It's definitely on these niggas as well.
Of all races, show up. It shouldn't just be the mothers trying to schlep over to the school after work.
I have a question about that.
You can show up to sports, if you can show up to Halloween. When I tell you, I never see more parents at a school than I do at a Halloween.
They show up for the party.
And I mean by the hundreds. Why is that not happening for parent teacher night? And Halloween, the Halloween stuff is in the middle of the day, in the middle of the workday.
Oh, it's not after school, it's not like that night?
No, bro. It's in the middle of the school day. And the reason I know this is because one day I was teaching a class and the kids had not finished their work, so I told them they weren't going to the Halloween parade. And the principal actually came into my classroom and said, we are waiting for the kids. And I said, well, they're, they're not coming. They didn't finish their work. And she looked at me like I had ten heads and was like, Ms. Dean. These kids need to put their pencils down and come outside. And I was like, what are you talking about? And when I opened the door and looked outside and I saw a thousand people standing outside, my jaw dropped. I didn't expect that. And let me tell you something, I had to bring those kids outside.
Wow.
Why is there a thousand people parent teachers night? What, where are these people parent teachers night? That's my question. It's one day. One, you made it for Halloween. All I'm asking is make it one day to parent teacher's night.
And it's Halloween during the day and this is parent teacher's night.
In the middle of the day. I, I almost fall over. When the principal's like, real talk, these kids need to come outside. I was like, seriously? She was like, uh, yeah, their families are here. And I went outside and was like. The whole community is here. The whole community was there.
Like, what lessons does it teach the kids? You get to go have this party out before you get your work done. That's not.
And your parents aren't gonna do this for parent teachers night. They're not showing up like this at school board meetings. But now you wanna show up if someone's racist. How about show up in advance and vote in advance so these people don't even end up on the school board in the first place? Again, we're reactionary. When do we? Become strategic in our thinking as a community?
Okay, that's a good, that's a very good point. My question is. With regards to this specific school board person, do you want an effective educator on the school board? Or do you want someone who's a perfect progressive who's never gonna say anything offensive? I would think.
It depends on who is better for the children.
Okay, let's say.
You're an asshole, but effective. I am more supportive of you than someone who's really nice and well intentioned and can't accomplish anything.
Thank you. Give me the school board person who says some shit that's not, that's not PC. If they're, if they are better for these kids than. The previous person or someone who's gonna be a perfectly, a perfect liberal, perfect progressive, who never says anything that offends anyone. Always uses the right pronouns, always, you, you know what I mean?
I, I don't need to like you. And I think as Americans, we're too obsessed with liking the person. We, we like, 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 like. I don't need to like you. If you're smart and effective. I want what's best for our children. I don't know what anybody else wants. And if that means I don't like you. I'm willing to sacrifice that.
Yeah.
For the sake of what's best for the children.
Yeah, well, that's the thing.
Some of the smartest people I know are people I don't like.
Yeah. Do you want a technocrat or do you want a, a, a populist?
Right. Do you want somebody who's effective or do you want someone who speaks really well? It's one of the things Clinton, when he was president, was. Had the, was most described as. People would say that they would have meetings with him. And they wouldn't get a single thing that they wanted. But the conversation went so well, they didn't realize it until they got to the parking lot.
Yeah, I've heard that story about him. He's in, he's in, he's so incredibly charming.
Yes. That it, by the time he gets to the parking lot, you realize he didn't agree to do anything he asked him for. But you had the best time. I mean, okay, I'm glad you had a great time. But these kids still can't read. And the school still doesn't have computers, so. I don't need to like you. I need you to be effective. I need you to be smart. I need you to be what's best. This isn't a congeniality contest.
Right.
And this, I think, impacts a child's trajectory just as important as breathing. Is there access to education? Not education, their access to it. If the best school in the world is a school they can't get to, then it doesn't matter. If the resources are there, but there's no way for them to get to those resources, then it doesn't matter.
Yeah, what is it like for them on a day to day basis right now? They ain't got no school supplies. Their teacher has to come out of pocket, you know, they. There's no, there's no free lunch program or the free lunch program doesn't, you know.
Why have we accepted this as a society, but we accept unlimited funding for war? Unlimited raises for school board members. On, everybody's getting a raise. Taxes are always going up. So then why are we cutting programs that affect children? A society that claims to care about them so much.
Mm-hmm. Nobody's taxed more than people who live in San Francisco, believe me.
Right. And to what avail? And I think that's what makes people think, you know what, giving the government my money is not working, so I might as well. Not. And support the party that says this government doesn't know what to do with our money. So let's keep it for ourselves and make the best decisions we can for our families. There was an argument for that. And this is the argument. This one gives that argument validity, whether you agree with it or not. Something to think about on this episode of Raw Food.